I will call the meeting to order and this is the June 18th, 2020 special call meeting of the City County Planning Commission. And the first thing that I would like to do is to welcome and introduce Shannon Blackburn, who is, has been appointed to represent Woodburn City on this commission. So I would ask Mr. Moore if he would administer the oath of office.
Thank you, Ms. Runner. Ms. Blackburn, are you prepared to take the oath as a Planning Commissioner?
Yes.
If so, if you would please raise your right hand. Do you solemnly swear that you will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of this Commonwealth and be faithful and true to the Commonwealth of Kentucky so long as you continue a citizen thereof? And that you will faithfully execute to the best of your ability the Office of Planning Commissioner according to law? And do you further solemnly swear that since the adoption of the present Constitution, you being a citizen of this state have not fought a duel with a deadly weapon within this state nor out of it? Nor have you sent or accepted a challenge to fight a duel with deadly weapons? Nor have you acted as a second in carrying the challenge? Nor aided or assisted any person thus offending? So help you God, indicate if it is so by saying, "I do."
I do.
Congratulations, Ms. Blackburn.
Thank you.
Ms. Barton, would you please call the roll?
Yes, ma'am. Commissioner Mallett?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Blackburn?
Yeah.
Commissioner Clark?
I don't have any sounds for some reason.
No, you do.
You do now.
Okay.
Commissioner Gay? Commissioner Graham?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Rich?
Rich.
Commissioner Unsell?
Yes.
Commissioner Bottal?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Volker?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Warren? Commissioner Warren, I believe you're muted as well.
I'm sorry. Yes, ma'am. Can you hear me?
Thank you, sir. Yes, sir. Chairman Runner?
Yes, ma'am. Everyone's had a chance to review the summary minutes of the June 4th call meeting. Are there any corrections to those minutes? No corrections?
I have a correction in the minutes.
Yes, ma'am.
Under the motion that I made, or not that I made, I'm sorry, that I was in, the word is should be definitely and not defiantly. I said there were definitely questions and concerns and what the minutes say is I defiantly said that and it was definitely, not defiantly.
I apologize.
Do we have any other corrections? We've known that I would ask for a motion that the minutes be approved as amended.
Don't move.
Thank you.
Commissioner Mallett?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Blackburn?
Shannon, you're muted there.
Yeah, I was muted, sorry. I don't think I get to vote on the minutes, right?
Correct.
Okay.
You can abstain from the motion.
Abstain.
Commissioner Clark?
Yes.
Commissioner Graham?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Unsell?
Abstain.
Commissioner Bottal?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Volker?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Warren?
Ma'am.
Chairman Runner?
Yes, ma'am.
Chairman Runner, I request that you order the record include all statutory and regulatory provisions, the commission's entire file for each application, and the qualifications of each staff witness. Finally, I'd request that you administer the oath to each of those staff witnesses.
Do you all swear to tell the truth before this commission?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you all. We have a report by Ms. Megan Mooney concerning an amendment to the budget and after she gives her presentation, we'll take questions and after that, we will have to have a motion on that budget. Ms. Mooney?
Hello, everyone. I've got a pretty straightforward and simple budget amendment for you this time. If you look on the first page of your budget that was included in your packet, there's a yellow highlighted line labeled Transit Planning Funds. We had budgeted $55,000 for this for this fiscal year and had a project in mind and it got postponed. So we ended up not doing this project. We will not receive those transit funds, but we also will not incur the expense on page two that's highlighted yellow as well for $55,000. So it's an equal decrease and increase in the same amount of $55,000 for income and expenses, both labeled Transit Planning Funds. Any questions I can answer for anybody on that?
Do we anticipate it coming up in the next fiscal year? Or is it?
It possibly, it possibly could be next year. I didn't confirm with Carissa. She just said that it has been postponed for the moment.
I can, I can answer that. Yes, it is confirmed. We just found out for sure about that just within the past few days, but we did get approved that that would, that would happen and we confirmed with the city that they are going to use those funds this next fiscal year. So we expect it just to be a short period of time. They're just waiting, as you know, you may have heard, they just hired a new transit manager and issued that new contract that they expect that person to start next month and they obviously want that person in before they start, start that process. So that will be, should, should incur that this, this next fiscal year.
Do you have any other questions? No other questions, then I would ask for a motion, please.
Don't move.
Thank you, and second?
Second.
Second.
Commissioner Mallett?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Blackburn?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Clark?
Yes.
Yes.
Commissioner Graham?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Unsell?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Bottal?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Volker?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Warren?
Ma'am.
Chairman Runner?
Yes, ma'am. The motion carried and thank you, Ms. Mooney, and it's so good to see you.
Thank you.
Subdivision and Site Welfare Plans, do we have any questions on those? No questions? Then we'll move on to Letters of Credit and Performance Fund. We had four items on the agenda that was sent in the mail and as you can see on the screen, we now have three additional items. I give you a chance to look over those. Do you have any questions on any of those seven items? No questions, then I'd ask for a motion, please.
Motion to approve the Letters of Credit and Performance Funds, the seven that are listed.
Thank you, ma'am. Do you need a second?
Second.
Thank you.
Commissioner Mallett?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Blackburn?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Clark?
Yes.
Commissioner Graham?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Unsell?
I believe you might be needing to change your sound. Yes, ma'am.
Thank you, ma'am. Commissioner Volker?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Warren?
Ma'am.
Chairman Runner?
Yes, ma'am. That brings us to unfinished business and I don't believe we have any, do we have any new business before we go into the public hearing?
Did you hit, did you hit me on that?
I did, maybe it was an echo of Ms. Unsell I heard.
We'll enter into the public hearing then. The first item denied is 2020-06 DP Dwight and Jan Travo have filed an application to amend the General Development Plan, which is the development plan conditions on a tract of land containing approximately 0.81 acres located at 1621 Scottsville Road. This property is zoned OPC, which is Office Professional Commercial with a General Development Plan. And also those same applicants on document number 2020-V06 have applied for variances on that same location and we will hear the staff report.
Thank you. We had a page turns on page for the.
Hey, Rachel, I hate to interrupt you, but we're having a hard, you're breaking up, so maybe move your speaker a little closer.
Okay. Is that better?
Yes.
Okay. Sorry about that. So just moving through the maps here on the screen, the current zoning of the property is OPC and the property was rezoned to OPC in 2014 and the development plan was amended in 2020. So the proposed development and be the second development plan amended since the original zone change back in 2014. Moving on, we have the current land use map, which shows that the current use of the property is commercial. And the current future land use designation for the property is also commercial. And this future land use category consists of a broad array of commercial development, including individual commercial, including retail, service, hotel, or office businesses that may exist along a highway corridor or a business district, as well as larger planned shopping centers and office parks. Limited high-density multifamily uses are allowed to be mixed into commercial areas. These uses should be limited to upper stories or blended in or scattered among commercial uses. No more than 25% of any contiguous area designated as commercial should contain multifamily uses and compatibility should be addressed by applying the policies in LU113 in conjunction with a general development plan. Next, I'm going to move on to the Site Characteristics Review section regarding the layout of the proposed addition and in reference to a couple of the variances. This is the proposed layout. You can see the existing building located in the central portion of the property. And then there's also existing parking located in front of the existing building. There's some proposed parking on the south side and then there's a proposed building addition on the rear portion of the property for which the applicants have requested a variance. And I'll go into a little bit more detail about that here in just a minute. Under the cultural or historical features, staff has noted that the existing primary structure was built in 1895. However, it is not a locally designated historic property, nor is it listed on the National Register of Historic Places. Moving into the Site Design and Compatibility Review, I'll just touch on the landscaping and screening requirement. And staff has noted that any new landscaping and screenings for the new structure and/or new parking areas will adhere to the standards required in the zoning ordinance for vehicle use areas and also when adjacent to an incompatible use. Moving into the Development Plan Conditions, there are three amendments that are proposed. The First Amendment is just a housekeeping item stating that the proposed development plan conditions would replace the existing, the existing binding elements that are recorded in, those are recorded in deed book 1115, pages eight, 17 through eight, 20. And then on number six, which let me jump back to the previous slide here. So number six, the proposed amendment states that there shall be no vehicular parking allowed within 25 feet of Scottsville Road. And you can see the existing parking setback referenced in this development plan condition, that's the dashed red line. And then the proposed development plan condition would require a parking setback of 25 feet and that's the, the solid red line that's located closer to Scottsville Road. Next, number nine, the existing stone wall, this is a new development plan condition that's proposed. The existing stone wall located along the Scottsville Road right-of-way is to remain in its current location. The applicant does reserve the right for repair to the wall as needed. Next, I'm going to jump on to page four of your staff report. We have a reference to section 3128 of the zoning ordinance, which outlines the requirements for a development plan amendment. And this section states that an amendment to any development plan condition for an approved development plan shall be approved only if the proposed amendment remains consistent with the adopted comprehensive plan and upon a finding that there have been major changes of an economic, physical, or social nature within the area of the property in question which were not anticipated at the time of the adoption of the general development plan or development plan conditions which are being amended, or that there have developed physical conditions which would not permit development of the property in question in accordance with the general development plan or development plan conditions which are being amended. And so to address this section of the ordinance and the requirements to amend a development plan, the applicants included the following narrative as a part of their application. It states, "The development plan conditions for this property were recorded in February of 2015. Based on a field survey, the existing parking spaces are actually located between 36 and 37 feet from the right-of-way. The development plan conditions propose to revise Binding Element 5 with a new development plan condition number 6, allowing for parking to be within 25 feet of Scottsville Road. There currently exists a stone wall along the right-of-way along Scottsville Road that screens the parking area. This wall is to remain in place." So that was the information provided on the application from the applicants. Oh, sorry, I missed one paragraph. It goes on to say that the applicant is desiring to construct a new children's treatment area due to the success of the current use and to be separate from the current facility to ensure privacy. The proposed addition is to be located to the rear of the existing building to retain the residential character of this section of Scottsville Road. The elevations that have been submitted show how this structure will maintain the residential feel for the new structure in accordance with the previous binding elements. And that should be number four on the previous page. And then I'll also jump on the slides here to the calculations that were referenced. So these are the elevations that were submitted that were referenced in that paragraph. So that is the information supplied with the development plan amendment application. The Planning Commission should consider if the argument provided by the applicants addresses the findings required for a development plan amendment. The applicants have not identified any major changes of an economic, physical, or social nature within the area of the property in question which were not anticipated at the time of the adoption of the development, development plan condition that is proposed to be amended, nor have there developed physical conditions which would prevent the development of the property in question in accordance with the current 50-foot setback requirement for parking along Scottsville Road. The binding elements for the adjacent property to the south, also zoned OPC, require a 50-foot setback for parking along Scottsville Road and the majority of the parking areas for other properties along the same section of Scottsville Road that are residential in character are setback further than the 25-foot requirement that is proposed. Moving on to the Focus 2030 Category Review, staff evaluated nine items and found that two of the items are in compliance and that the Planning Commission should determine compliance with seven of the items. So the first is LU1.1.3. The Planning Commission should determine if the proposed changes to the development plan to allow parking within 25 feet of Scottsville Road are compatible with the area. Next, LU2. The Planning Commission should determine if the proposed changes will result in a high-quality development that includes design standards tailored to preserve the character of the area. Next, HN1, HN1.2, and HN1.3. The Planning Commission should determine if the proposed amendment will result in compatible infill development that will maintain or improve the existing character, added up development, and urban design within the area and if it will strengthen existing neighborhoods and districts. And last, ED1 and ED3. The Planning Commission should determine if the proposed amendment to allow parking within 25 feet of Scottsville Road will help support and retain the existing business located on the property. Next, I'm going to jump back to the plan when we're going through the, the variances here. So the provision of the zoning ordinance from which the variances are requested are referenced in section 468C, which requires an additional setback when located adjacent to the boundary of a single-family residential zoning district or single-family residential use. And if you'll recall, in looking at the zoning map, the property line to the north and west are both adjacent to a single-family residential district, triggering this additional setback. And so there are two variances that are requested. One is for an existing legally non-conforming structure, which is the existing building shown here, located 1.4 feet from the property line. And then the other variance proposed for the proposed building along the rear property line or the west property line here with a proposed setback of 15 feet. So the applicant is requesting two variances from the 40-foot setback to bring the existing building into compliance, again, 1.4 feet from the property line. And the proposed building would be located 15 feet from the rear or western property line. Also on page five of the staff report, KRS 100.243 outlines the findings necessary for granting a variance. Those are there for your reference. The applicants also supplied a brief narrative on the variance application to help address these findings. It states that variance number one pertains to an existing structure that has not had any previous negative impact on the public health, safety, or welfare. Because the structure will remain active, it will continue to have no impact. Variance two pertains to a proposed 30-by-50 structure. The requested reduction to a 15-foot setback will still allow all necessary incompatible land use, landscape requirements to be met. Therefore, there will not be any negative impact to the adjacent property owner. So then, just concluding with the staff review summary, again, there are two applications for your consideration. The first relates to the development plan amendment. And again, the main change for that location relates to the parking setback. Let me jump back to that exhibit. And so the applicants again are proposing to amend the development plan to allow a portion of the existing parking area to remain at least 25 feet from Scottsville Road. In 2015, a permit was granted for the portion of the existing parking area subject to the proposed amendment. The site plan for the approved permit depicted the parking area in compliance with the 50-foot setback requirement, but what was constructed does, does not match the permit or the current parking elements. And then the second application, again, is the variance application. There are two variances, one for the existing legally non-conforming structure and then the second is for the proposed structure from the 40-foot setback that's required adjacent to a single-family district or use. And then wrapping up with the points to consider on page one, the proposed development plan amendment remains consistent with the future land use map and the commercial designation. The proposed development complies with the majority of the Site Characteristics Review criteria and a majority of the review criteria for site design, with the exception of the side and rear yard setbacks adjacent to the single-family residential district or use. If the proposed variances are approved, the development would meet the minimum requirements in the zoning ordinance. The Planning Commission should determine if the applicants have adequately addressed the findings required to amend the development plan and if the proposed development plan amendment to allow parking within 25 feet of Scottsville Road is compatible with the surrounding area. Finally, the Planning Commission should consider if the requested variances arise from special circumstances which do not generally apply to land in the general vicinity, or if a strict application of the provisions of the regulations would deprive the property owner of the reasonable use of the land. And that is all I have for the staff report, but I'm happy to answer any questions.
So Rachel, they're probably basically asking for forgiveness for stuff that's already been found to be a problem. Was this a code enforcement issue?
It's not a code enforcement issue. It was discovered just at the time that the, the new building was proposed when we were discussing the variance application. I think it was realized at the time the survey was completed for that application that the existing parking did not meet the current binding element.
So if they don't build a new building, then one variance doesn't, is not required?
Well, the, the variance for the existing building is not actually required regardless. It's just a legally non-conforming structure. But since they were applying for a variance for the proposed building, this would just go ahead and basically make that structure a legally conforming structure if a variance was granted for the existing.
And the parking, is anybody else along Scottsville Road there got that type of variance to put the parking up closer to Scottsville Road? Or is this the first request for that?
This, I guess, so the parking is not necessarily a variance request. The parking, the 50-foot current requirement is just part of the existing binding elements that were adopted when the property was originally rezoned in 2014. The property to the south has a similar binding element, also approved when it was rezoned for that same 50-foot setback. So it's not, it's not actually a variance request. It's, it's an amendment to the development plan or to the development plan condition, what we formally refer to as a binding element.
Rachel, I'm somewhat familiar with this property. I recall something, is there a retaining wall in the front of this property?
There, there is a stone wall that runs in the front, in the front of the parking area now, and that's the same stone wall that was referenced in the narrative for the development plan amendment. And then also that new development plan condition that is proposed, number nine on page three of your staff report references that same stone wall.
Okay. And, and so the, the parking portion of this is an adjustment to the, I want to say binding elements, but plant, I guess it would have been binding elements at the time this was reported.
Right.
And it is not a variance, correct?
It's just a request to reduce the setback that was previously required under the binding elements from 50 to 25.
I see. And then the variance that's requested for, one of them is for existing buildings, is that correct?
Yes, and that building is a legally non-conforming structure. So it's not that that was put there in error, it's just that since they're requesting a variance for the newly proposed structure, they decided to go ahead and just ask for a variance for the existing structure. So then that way, both structures, if the variances were approved, would then be legally conforming structures with approved variances.
See, okay. And then lastly, with regard to the parking, did you say that it doesn't conform to the permit that was applied for?
Correct. The permit from 2015 depicted the parking that was proposed in compliance with the, the current 50-foot setback required under the current binding elements. And I'm, and I, the property owner and applicant may want to speak more to this. I don't know that it was necessarily done intentionally, but somehow when it was actually constructed, what was constructed doesn't match what was shown on the permit. And I don't think it was realized until the variance application was discussed for the proposed building when they did all the survey work at that time.
Okay. I, I see. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay. Am I on or not?
Yes, sir. You, you just need to yourself, though.
Yeah, I mean, we spent $1,800 on a survey.
Excuse me, what, what?
Did it and you guys approved it. So the parking lot was approved in 2014.
Mr. Tribune?
Yeah.
The chairman has some questions to ask before you start.
Before, before you can answer those questions, we just need to get you sworn in, okay?
Okay.
If you could state your name and address for us, please.
White Tribune, 500 Peachtree Lane. White Tribune, five hundred Peachtree Lane.
And you swear? And you swear to tell the truth before this commission? Thank you.
Yeah, just the only thing to say is, when we asked for the zoning change, the old garage there from, I guess, the nineteen twenties was there then and was approved. And the parking lot, I spent eighteen hundred dollars on a survey to get approved, it was approved. And after the parking lot was done, somebody came out inspected and said it was okay. So, you know, that's the, I know this new survey is saying, well, the angle of it is catching part of that fifty foot. So all I know is that in two thousand and fourteen or fifteen, it was inspected, it was okay, and so was the yellow garage, the little structure on the side. I'm sitting in that yellow garage now.
Commissioners, do you have any questions for Mr. Tribune?
Do you know who came and surveyed, I mean, who surveyed it and who came and approved it?
I don't know who your inspector is. I mean, the big three-foot by two-foot survey, the four or five pages, is turned into you guys. So I'm not sure who, who that was. I think An- Anderson, maybe? I, I'm not sure. It's been five, six years.
I may just add one point of clarification there. So the, the survey and the parking that was depicted on the original site plan for the permit in two thousand and fifteen was shown to comply with the fifty-foot setback. The planning commission in two thousand and fifteen, as far as the permitting process goes, we weren't involved with any sort of post-construction compliance during that time. It's only recently that we started doing that, partially to, to kind of help out with things like this in the future and try to alleviate these issues moving forward. Normally, previously, the, the building inspection process, they, the inspectors, they're, they're going out looking at the interior portion of the building, not necessarily compliance with zoning requirements.
No, no, someone came by and looked at the block top, a block top inspector, I don't know. And now Ron Taber came by and looked at the building part, but then also a block top person, you know, there's just lots of people. I remember Ron Taber as the building person. Someone else just drove by and looked at the block top. And they made me add those spots. I don't mind, I don't mind doing that. I mean, I'll do whatever people tell me to. But they made me get a survey, they made me draw it, they made me correct something about it, and then they came inspected at the end.
So Mr. Tribune, it's your position that, that you, that, that it became out of compliance with the development plans and conditions based on a suggestion or an enforcement from some, some government entity that, that you can't recall who that was?
For the block top inspector, yeah. I remember Ron Taber because I went to church with him. I mean, he came by and looked at the ramp on the outside and looked at the building part. And of course, the building was grandfathered in by being nineteen hundred and nineteen twenty or thirty garage than I'm sitting in now. That was just grandfathered with the zoning change. And then the eighteen hundred dollar survey, I mean, if it was wrong, I mean, you got, I don't know what to say. I mean, it's, I spent the money, we corrected something about handicap parking spots, and then at the end, yeah, a, a city inspector on block top came by and looked at it.
Okay, thank you.
Mainly looking at handicap spots, I think, but I mean, they looked at everything. And that's, yeah, so, I mean, if we're, if, the guy now is saying, oh, well, it's because the angle of it is catching it, we need to ask for this. And that's okay, too. I, I want to, you know, you guys are the bosses. I just ask y'all to tell me what to do, and I try to do it.
Do you have any other questions for the applicant?
Let me ask something, and I don't usually do this, but I may be trying to offer up a potential compromise here. So, and I may need Brian Shirley's help for this, see him on here. So, Brian, the first question I have is on the, the document that's on the screen now. I see a thirty-six foot and a thirty-seven foot measurement there. Is that thirty-six foot your measurement of the closest parking spot to the front property line there?
Mr. Peterson, I cannot answer that until Velma swears me in.
Well, that's a good, good point.
Mr. Shirley, thank you. Would you state your name and address, please?
Brian Shirley, one one three six South Park Drive, and I do swear to tell the truth.
Thank you, sir.
Now, now you have to tell the truth, Brian.
You're right. We noticed all this when we did the field survey, that the parking was not in compliance with the original development plan condition. We just thought it'd be prudent to go ahead and bring this into compliance. I think the current standard would allow parking up to twenty-five feet of the right away line. So that's what we're going in showing. I don't think there's any intention right now to revise the party. But if it were to ever get revised, and say if it went to a ninety-degree parking angle instead, or parking stall instead of the angle, we might be able to encroach a little bit closer to the existing right ways Scottsville Road to twenty-five feet.
So, so I guess that's kind of the, I think, the, I don't, the concern, I believe, is the encroachment of that parking closer to Scottsville Road. So I guess what I was going to offer was, if that thirty-six foot is the minimum measurement that may want to be considered or thought to only amend that proposed setback to thirty-six feet instead of all the way down to twenty-five, just to kind of help, help with that situation. But that was just a, just a thought to throw out to try to maybe split the difference there.
And Mr. Tribune would have to be the one to answer that.
Absolutely.
Adhere to the, the existing mission that is there now.
Yeah, I, I don't care. I mean, as far as I'm concerned, it was inspected in two thousand and fourteen, it's done with. I got the zoning change back then, everything was approved.
Mr. Tribune, this is Hamp Moore, I'm the commission's attorney. So what I hear you saying, and Mr. Shirley saying, is that you would like to amend gen- the development plan condition number six to change the twenty-five feet foot distance to thirty-six feet. And so, and so that would now read, there shall be no vehicular parking allowed within thirty-six feet of Scottsville Road.
Yes, looking, looking at that little map, it looks like the corner of a car might be over at that thirty-seven point, yeah, so that's fine.
So that's your agreement?
Yes.
Thank you.
With that, now, someone mentioned something about the wall that I never agreed to. I didn't quite understand what the wall was. I mean, I'm not asking, the wall is not part of this.
Mr. Tribune, your development plan amendment application included a statement that there currently exists a stone wall along the right play along Scottsville Road that screens the parking area. This wall is to remain in place. And then, as part of the staff review and comment period of the application process, I believe on page thirty-four of the staff report, the staff had recommended that to support the argument in your development plan amendment application that you, that you can, we requested that you consider adding an additional development plan condition requiring that the wall remain. And then the revised set of development plan conditions that we received had made that change, the addition of.
Who stated that? I, I did not state that. Was that Shirley or which of you guys? I mean, I don't, I like that wall. I don't ever plan to tear it down, but I, it's a hundred-year-old wall. I mean, it's fallen over at times, and at sixty-three, I can repair it some, but at seventy-five or eighty-five, I'm not guaranteed for the rest of my life I'm going to keep repairing that wall. No. Because again, this is a, a red herring. This wall is not part of what we're asking about.
Mr. Tribune, that wall is, it is existing, and it was at staff's recommendation that we added that you would not take that wall down.
I don't plan on it, but I don't want it to, I mean, why is that even a part of, we're talking about variance of distance, we're not talking about the wall.
Now, this, this right now is pertaining to the development plan condition amendment.
Why even, why are we talking about a wall? Because it's part of the property. Yeah, but I mean, that's not part of the zoning variance we're talking about.
If we take the wall down, we'll have to add substantial landscape to screen the vehicle use area. And by keeping the wall, we don't need to necessarily do that. That is acting as the visual screen to the parking lot.
Explain that a little bit. What's a visual screen? I, I'm not familiar with that term. I know what those words mean, but I don't know what that has to do with anything.
All parking lots are required that are new to be screened from public right away. Now, with this development plan amendment, we realize that your parking was constructed closer to the right away line, no, it was originally approved. So as part of that, we need to preserve some of the screening, and that stone wall is acting as that screening.
Okay, so we'll have a two-foot screening. Yeah, I agree that if that's the rules, I'll have a thirty-inch screening of forever. I mean, as, as best as I can do it, yeah.
So, Mr. Tribune, are, are you requesting that you not include the condition about maintaining the wall, but that you are just agreeing to meet the minimum screening requirements of the zoning ordinance for that vehicle use area in the future?
What's the minimum, what's the minimum screening requirement? Tell me that.
The minimum screening requirements would be at least seventy percent of the distance along that frontage being screened with shrubs, fifty percent evergreen. And then I believe there are enough deciduous trees existing to meet that requirement, but right now, this stone wall is serving in place of shrubs that would normally be required under the landscape ordinance.
So either keep a screening of shrubs or keep that wall up forever. And I, yeah, I agree to one of those two things, yeah. I'll keep, whatever you just said, a screening of shrubs. I mean, mainly if, if uninsured motorists come in and wipes out that wall, which happened two hundred feet down the street from me, you know, I, I don't want to try to rebuild that wall, but I love that wall. I want to keep it as far along as I can.
Yeah, I think it's important, it's important to note from a notice standpoint that that stone wall extends not only across Mr. Tribune's property, but along adjacent properties as well. That wall has been, as you all will recall, the subject of a lot of discussion over the years about its preservation. And, and so this, this application has been advertised and available to the public with a, with a development plan condition number nine. And it, it, as I understand, Mr. Tribune, he's fine with that condition, as I hear him. How about that, Mr. Tribune?
Well, as long as it's repairable and fixable, yeah. I mean, if it gets wiped out by a storm or a tree or something, somebody else, you know, for three hundred dollars, a backhoe can come, take away all the rocks, and I can, I can plant a lot of shrub there. I can do shrub work better than I can do basin work, I guess is one thing.
So, so let me, I, I'll let me just throw this out there. I'm not sure Mr. Trib- Tribune even understands the application he has before this planning commission. I, I don't know what, what the planning commission feels. I think the wall is, is exactly what everybody has said, but it's also part of the, I guess, community character of that consideration of that corridor of Scottsville Road in combination with that setback of fifty feet and/or reduced down to thirty-six feet or whatever, whatever is, is decided here. So I, I guess the planning commission needs to decide how much that matters. And then Mr. Trib- Tribune needs to tell us definitively whether he's, what he's saying. What I hear him saying is that if the wall's damaged, he doesn't really want to fix it, he wants to just put up the screening. So then I think we need to.
Yes.
Add as part of the, the character consideration and whether or not that is, you know, I don't, I don't know. I don't know what else to say about that.
Yeah, I promised to either do the screen or the wall. I'll do one or the other.
Well, I guess, here's, here's my, here's my, what I'm trying to say, I guess, and maybe I'll just be more blunt. You'll, you have to do one or the other. As the application is submitted, now it's you have to keep the wall. Now, if it's destroyed and, or you desire to amend that later, you could always come back and amend the development plan conditions at that later date.
I don't want to come back, no. I mean, I mean, tell me what I need, tell me the rules, and I'll do it, but don't add something on me that I didn't even talk about or ask about. I'm asking about a forty-foot variance or thirty-foot variance. So let's, let's keep to the topic and not try to blackmail the guy, pressure me to do something that I feel uncomfortable about.
Well, planning commissioner, I mean, I don't know what to say about that, that particular statement.
I think according to the application that you have submitted to us.
He signed his application.
Well, well, Ben, Ben, I, I think with the application, can, can you hear me, Ben?
Yeah.
Velma, can you hear me?
Yes, sir.
Can you hear me?
Yes, sir.
I, I think, I, I think according to the application that has been submitted to us tonight is, i- i- if you want to go forward, that wall will need to be repaired.
That's the way it's been advertised.
So I, I think if we're going, if you want us to vote on this tonight, is if something, you, you are committing to, if something happens to that wall, that you will repair the wall.
As best as I can. I mean, I'm sixty-three and healthy now, but at eighty-three, I don't know how much I can repair a stinking wall. I don't say for the rest of my day, I'm doing this.
Well, with, with the binding elements that we're doing, at that point, if you were not able to, you would have to hire it out.
Well, again, I guess I talked to this Ben Shirley, like, who put that in there? I know you guys could mix this in. I mean, I told everybody, I looked, I love that wall, I want that wall there, but I'm not going to sign in blood that I'm going to keep it forever regardless of what happens to it. If a tree takes it out, if a hurricane takes it out, no.
Well, then, then I, I'm going to make a suggestion that we table this application until you can go back and review and maybe resubmit to us. Because I, I think what, I think what Ben was, was evidently trying to say, and if, if we vote on it tonight, it's going to be that that wall has to be repaired if something happens to it.
Is that what we said, Ben? Ben Shirley?
Right.
Right.
The way we have it written in there is, you're not going to take that wall down. The wall's going to stay.
Yeah, I'm not going to take it down, no.
If, if it gets damaged, it would be repaired. Now, if there was a catastrophic accident, I believe the staff would work with this on how to get that taken care of. If a vehicle hits it, it would be their responsibility to repair it.
Well, a vehicle did hit one two hundred feet down the road from it, but yeah.
It would be the, if person's insured, which they're legally required to be, and it would be their insurance, it would pay for it. And this is put in as a recommendation from staff.
Well, yeah, my repair work will be questionable about what, what, how good my repair work is. Yeah, I can, let's go with it. Yeah, I'll, I'll repair it as best my ability. What it's going to look like, I don't know, but I'll repair it.
So, Mr.?
I repaired it already.
So, Mr. Tribune...
Yes.
This hand more again. I'd like to go over with you then, development plan condition number nine, which can be found on page three of the staff report.
Yes. Okay.
And that condition says this. "The existing stone wall located along the Scottsville Road right-of-way is to remain in its current location. The applicant does reserve the right for repairs to the wall as needed." Is it your agreement to honor that condition?
Yeah, I'll repair it. I've been repairing it, yes.
Thank you, sir.
Do we have any other questions for the applicant? Do we have any opposition to this request? No opposition?
Can I ask one more question?
Yes, ma'am.
What kind of business is done here? And is there enough parking in the 36-foot in order to continue this business?
Commissioner Clark, I'm going to change the slide here.
I'm sorry, I can't hear you.
Can you hear me now? Commissioner Clark, can you hear me?
Yeah, I can. Thank you. I can now.
Okay, so on page 14 of your staff report, I don't know what's shown on the screen. The applicants are proposing to add parking for the proposed addition. So there would be enough parking.
There would be?
I think the applicant also moves to the first business. They do child... The existing uses for family therapy. And then the new building to the rear is to be proposed for child therapy, where they're going to have privacy. And the intent is to put the building to the rear, preserving the character of Scottsville Road and not adding any more to the area. And the existing structure... The proposed structure that you had elevations of, it's residential character. It's going to be the same color as the existing house. So from the road, you're not going to see any difference.
Thank you.
And is there enough parking in that blueprint?
We will be adding additional parking to the south side of the existing house that's being used for therapy to accommodate the additional parking needs for any additional therapy done in the new building.
Okay.
Thank you, Brian.
Okay, do we have any other questions before I call for a motion? No other questions? Then I'll ask for a motion on the amendment to the general development plan.
Make the motion to approve proposed general development plan amendment, adopted number 202006 DP. Based upon the testimony documents presented in this public hearing, proposed general development plan amendment is consistent with adopted Focus 2030 Conference Plan. It's demonstrated by its compliance with objectives and action items. Further, also finds there have been major changes in economic, fiscal, or social nature within the area of property. Questions requested to findings of the item recommendation include a summary of evidence and testimony presented by the publication.
Thank you, Mr. Warren. We need a second.
Second.
Commissioner Allen?
Epstein.
Commissioner Blackburn?
Yes.
Commissioner Clark?
Yes.
Commissioner Graham?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Umble?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Bithaly?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Walker?
No.
Commissioner Warren?
Yes, ma'am.
Chair Runner?
Yes, ma'am. The motion carried with opposition. Now we need to act on the variance request. I'll call for that motion.
Make the motion to approve the request for the variances in 1621 Scottsville Road, adopted for 2020 V E O 1. A variance of 38.6 feet from the required 40-foot setback adjacent to the single-family residential zoning district are used to allow existing structure to be 1.4 feet from the side property line and a variance of 25 feet from the required 40-foot setback, rear setback adjacent to the single-family residential zoning are used to allow a proposed structure to be located 15 feet from the rear property line. Yes. Present in this public hearing has shown granting these variances will not adversely affect public health, safety, or welfare, and will not alter the essential characteristics of the general entity, and will not cause a hazard or nuisance to the public, and will not allow unreasonable circumvention to the requirements of the zoning regulations.
Thank you, Sergeant. Need a second?
Second.
Second.
Thank you.
Commissioner Allen?
Epstein.
Commissioner Blackburn?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Clark?
Yes.
Commissioner Graham?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Umble? Commissioner Bithaly?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Walker?
No.
Commissioner Warren?
Ma'am.
Chair Runner?
Yes, ma'am. The motion carried with opposition. The next item, adopted 202027 Z County, Ben Hansbrough and Doran Investments LLC have filed an application to rezonate portion of... Excuse me, tracts of land containing approximately two acres located at a portion of 6378 and 6424 Cemetery Road from agriculture to residential estate with the general development plan. And we will have the staff report.
Chair Runner, can everybody hear me?
No. It's really hard to hear you.
Okay, I'll... Can everybody hear me now?
That's much better.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right, you're welcome. Yeah, I'll hold my phone a little closer so you all can hear better. So we had a pre-application conference for the properties you see outlined here in yellow on April 27th. As Chair Runner has already said, the properties are both zone agriculture. And their current use is also agriculture. And they're surrounded by agricultural and single-family residential uses for the most part. And the future land use designation is low-density residential. So I'll leave this up, and we can kind of talk about it as we go along. But the applicants are requesting to rezone about two acres there at 6378 6424 Cemetery Road in order to divide the portion of the properties from larger agricultural tracts and create two single-family residential lots. So I'll just kind of go back here. This map will suffice. We see where the two lots are divided. And so they're proposing to cut off two separate lots, which would leave... Still leave the agricultural tracts. The remaining portion of each lot would be combined to create a 12.7-acre agriculture tract. So right now, the properties are using... Current use agriculture. They... If this is approved, they would change the single-family residential with the density of one dwelling per acre. Look at first page of your staff report there. The properties, again, it does name it as low-density residential. The proposed RE-zone is a potentially compatible zoning designation in the low-density residential category and may be appropriated if body determines that the proposed development is compatible with the sort of area. Just noting the compatibility with the surrounding development on the staff report there. Staff has noted there are several mature trees located on portions of the properties, and there are known sinkholes in the vicinity. So I will go on to page two of your staff report. Just noting on the layout, lot sizes, and setbacks, there will be a development plan condition that addresses additional front yard setback. Prime farmland, there is a portion of the property located at 6378 Cemetery Road that contains soil type classified as farmland of steep wide importance. And soil suitability, the property contains soil types that are classified as very limited regarding soil suitability for septic tank absorption fields. I will also note, before I go to the site design and compatibility review, that as you can see here, there are already existing homes located on these properties. So those homes are proposed to remain. But I'll just kind of go over real quickly what the surrounding area is like, that the densities range from 1.4 dwelling units per acre to 1.21 dwelling units per acre. And I'll just, like I said, the homes are already there. But I'll note building orientation, that the existing homes are oriented towards Cemetery Road. If the homes are ever replaced, new structures should also be oriented towards Cemetery Road or buffered from view of vegetation if oriented away from Cemetery Road. I'll go on to page three, where we have the development plan conditions. There are nine of them. I'll read through those now. Number one, the minimum square footage shall be 1,500 for a single-story residence and 1,300 square feet on the ground level of a one and one-half or two-story home, exclusive of porches and garages. Manufactured homes shall be prohibited. Number two, all homes will have a minimum of a two-car attached garage. Number three, building materials for the primary residence shall be brick, stone, 5% board, or vinyl. All foundations shall have brick veneer. No metal siding will be permitted. Number four, all utilities shall be underground. Number five, the existing residences will utilize the existing septic systems located on their respective properties. In the event that either of the existing residences are ever replaced, the Health Department shall inspect the current system and/or issue a permit for a new septic system for any new residents constructed prior to the issuance of a building permit. Number six, driveway placement shall be coordinated with KYDC prior to construction. Number seven, all residences shall be constructed to face the public street and shall be set back from the existing right-of-way a minimum distance of 65 feet. Number eight, trees on the property shall be preserved to the greatest extent possible. Any trees over 6-inch caliper that are healthy and in good growing condition within 10 feet of a property line will be retained. And number nine, any sinkholes that develop within the limits of construction shall be repaired prior to the continuation of construction. Going down to the Focus 2030 category review. I apologize, we do have a typo on housing in neighborhoods. That list there, that should just say NA. So there are actually 14 items that staff evaluated, 11 of which were in compliance and three of which are up to your determination. Those three are LU113, which should... This is for you all to determine if the proposal is compatible with the area. Also, LU2, the planning commission should determine if the proposal is a high-quality development that will protect the character of the area. And NCR241, the planning commission should determine whether or not the proposed development will result in increased amount of development pressure on the countryside. So going back to the first page, where we have our points to consider. Those are, first, the proposal is consistent with the flume and low-density residential category. The proposed development complies with the majority of the site characteristics review criteria and the majority of the review criteria for site design meets the minimum requirements of the zoning ordinance. And compatibility of the proposed development should be determined by the planning commission. So that is all I have, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Ms. Ramsey. Do we have any questions for Harvard before we hear from the applicant?
Thank you, Commissioner Clark is trying to speak, but she's muted.
Did you have a question, Ms. Clark?
Yes, I was asking if there's going to be a separate driveway for this lot or if there's going to be a shared driveway to get back there.
Well, the applicant stated in development plan condition number six that any driveway placement would be coordinated with the Kentucky Transportation Cabinet. I don't know if those conversations have taken place yet. That may be a question for the applicant.
Yes, I'll go ahead and answer that. I was planning on putting another driveway in there.
Please, Sergeant.
Ben?
Yes.
If we could swear you in first. I apologize for interrupting you.
Okay, that's fine.
If you'd state your name and address for us, please.
Okay. My name is Ben Hansbrough. My address is 560 Markham Drive Circle in Alveton, Kentucky.
And you swear to tell the truth?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. Now you can go ahead. I apologize for interrupting you.
You're just fine. I don't... I guess I don't know all the standards yet. Yeah, I was planning on putting a driveway in there. And that driveway would go all the way back and obviously lead to my house that I was planning on building back there.
Have you talked with the highway department about the allowance of that driveway?
Uh, we have not yet. David, you may be able to help me out a little bit about this. I know we've talked about it just a little bit.
It will have to be approved by the Kentucky Transportation Department.
Correct. Kind of breaking up on me. I don't know if I can still hear you. Dean, you are correct.
Right.
Yeah. Hey, Ben, let me ask you something, I think will be a question a couple of us will have. On number three, you've got all the things that can be used, but would you be willing to put a 75% or 80% on a couple of those? Maybe the brick or stone?
Are you talking about on my personal house back there?
Where the new house you're building.
Yes, yes, that's our plan. We were going to... We were going to use 75... It's... Actually, it's all going to be brick and stone.
Okay, so do you mind if we change that into binding element?
Commissioner Walker? I apologize for interrupting, but the property that I believe Mr. Hansbrough intends to build on... And Rachel or Ben, stop me if I'm wrong here. But I believe that's the larger agricultural tract, which would not be down by these development plan conditions. There are existing homes on both of the... Both of these tracts already. And see, I'm looking here at what they are constructed of. They're both constructed primarily of brick.
They are. Both of them are in compliance now.
Yeah, so whatever he builds on the larger agricultural tract, it's just an agriculture... Agricultural zones tract, so.
So these binding elements would not be... Would not have to conform to that?
Correct. They are only for... They're only for the new... The two new single-family residential one-acre tracts that they have pulled out.
And the only thing that I know that is not currently in compliance but has been approved by Warren RCC is to eventually bury the buildings. They're currently above ground, but have been approved to be lower.
Thank you.
But are existing. So right now, they don't need to change. They're going to be compliant currently.
David, we want you to swear you in.
Yes, ma'am.
If you'd state your name and address for us, please.
David Doran, 2616 Alveton, Kentucky, 42122.
And you swear to tell the truth?
Yes, ma'am.
And have done so.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. Any other questions? Thank you, Commissioner Graham.
This may be a question for staff. I just want to make sure I understand. Both of these tracts have existing structures on them. And is it the intent currently of the applicant to leave these structures?
Yes.
Okay. And so these binding elements that we are referring to are the development plan conditions. Are in the event one of those structures is torn down and rebuilt. Would that be correct?
Correct. If you guys are looking, 6424 was an existing house that was not in compliance Correct. If you guys are looking, sixty-four-twenty-four was an existing house that was not in compliance that I ripped down and rebuilt a brand-new house.
Hey, Dave, which, which one is that?
Sixty-four-twenty-four is a brand-new house. It used to be a white piece of junk, nineteen-seventy-something house, and I ripped it down and it's a brand-new house now.
Okay.
And the, the sixty, uh, sixty-three-seventy-eight is an all-brick at the current moment.
Okay.
And I've also, if you're looking at your documents, there used to be a mobile home on that property as well. I have removed and removed all structures and septic tanks.
So in Development Plan Number Three, are we taking out the cement board and the vinyl and just using brick or stone?
No, I don't think so because I think those houses already, they're already constructed.
I'm talking about for the new, it says for the new primary.
By them, three. Well, that's what I was asking about, but they're, they're saying that that, that because he's building the new house on the ag part, none of these go to it. Is that correct? Is that correct, Monica?
Yes, that, that is correct. The, there are already existing homes on the, um, and I, I know it's kind of confusing because we're, we're kind of moving some lot lines here is what's going on.
So really, we're not, so really, we're not even, even talking about the new house that he's going to build.
That, that is, that is correct, yes.
Okay.
Well, should we put in a development plan then for the new house to make sure the materials are the same?
I don't think you, I don't think you can, I don't think you can. It's an ag, it's an ag lot.
Yes, that, that is correct. With, that, the remaining portion of, of these lots would be an agricultural, and it would remain zoned agriculture. And so you can have a single-family home on agriculture.
Yeah.
Ben's intention is to make a nice home. I'm sorry, guys. I just, I, I got kicked out of the conversation. If I missed a question or something, I'd be more than happy to answer it.
No, I think, I, I think, I think we were just trying to get straight with exactly what we're looking at, uh, voting on, so, uh, I, I mean, so we're really, okay.
So in summary, uh, if I may, we are simply voting on two existing lots. Existing structures on them. And these binding elements are only meant in the, in the event that these structures would be torn down and rebuilt, and the developer has no intention of tearing them down and rebuilding. Is that an accurate summary?
Correct.
Correct. Got it.
Thank you. Hope we've got that clarified now. Do we have any opposition to this request? No opposition? Any other questions, commissioners, before I call for a motion? Nothing else, then I'll ask for a motion, please.
I made the motion to approve the proposed zoning amendment together with a condition upon the general development plan document number twenty-twenty-twenty-seven-Z. CEO, based on the testimony documents presented in the public hearing, the proposed zoning map amendment is consistent with the adopted Focus Twenty-Thirty Comprehensive Plan as demonstrated by its compliance with the objectives and action items presented by the staff. Therefore, the proposed zoning map amendment is in agreement with the adopted comprehensive plan. I further request this motion includes the summary of evidence and testimony presented by the witnesses at the public hearing.
Thank you. Thank you.
Commissioner Ballot?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Blackburn?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Clark?
Yes.
Commissioner Graham?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Unseld?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Bytally?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Volker?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Warren?
Yes, ma'am.
Chair Runner?
Yes, ma'am. The motion carried, our recommendation will be for approval. Thank you all.
Thank you.
So do we have anything to discuss?
Uh, no, ma'am.
No, ma'am. Commissioners, do you have anything before we adjourn?
Did you have any, like, it sounds like a radio or TV playing in the background. I really having trouble tonight hearing everybody.
I believe, uh, Mr. Volker just got some feedback on his line and sometimes Miss Bytally. I think it's just one of those things that we have to kind of work through as we, as we go here.
Okay, I just heard a lot of static. I just couldn't hear a lot of things, so I was just making sure. And do we know how the budget's going in city and the county?
So, uh, for, for the budget, uh, we are on track. I mean, uh, the thing we're unsure of is what our construction fees will bring in next year. I think that's the only thing that we'll, uh, have a big question on moving forward. Um, our allocation from the cities and county, uh, in fact, the city, I believe, approved earlier today. We will be getting the same allocation as previous years from the city and also from the county. So we won't see any reduction there, uh, but as, uh, you know, we've kind of been riding the coattails of development, and as pension costs and other costs have gone up over the years, we've been able to cover those you know, with those additional construction fees. So our construction fees go down and, uh, you know, and, and that will affect our budget. But we believe we're going to be in good shape the rest of this.
Good. Thank you.
Jessica, Jessica, how many do we have for next, uh, meeting? How many things on the agendas?
I believe there's five for July.
Well, I wanted to welcome again Ms. Blackburn, and she stayed the whole meeting, so I guess that's a good thing for us. And also say hi to Ms. Ritchie. Glad that she's listening in. So, uh, if there's nothing else, we adjourn. Thank you all.
Thank you.
Bye.